...and participating in government, whether you wanted to or not. Okay, item I, one. Request option regarding RFP for solid waste emerging technology. Frank? Or Yuri, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, we're here to seek guidance on the next step to take. On May of last year, the Board of County Commissioners authorized us to seek a request for information in RFI regarding new technology and the disposal of solid waste. And we had a committee made of John Denenhoff, Jill Hayes, and myself. In those guidance, initial guidances, we had the parameters of ability to scale to 500,000 tons, have an option for 10 facilities, eliminate the need of the county to purchase a new or expand existing landfills, not requiring donations by the county of land, reduce the smells, process all non-hazardous waste, and a couple of other ones. With this in mind, we went out and we developed the RFI. We had four respondents initially. Two of them merged into making one presentation, and we had the points of the presentations you have in front of you. Pretty much, all of them had some valid points. Some of them, or one of them in particular, said that they could do it at a cost of $70 per ton. Taken to consideration right now, we charge $29.50 a ton. And after all these deliberations, we believe that, or let me add, that we made a table in front of you, that you have all the options that were, or the main options that were required. The vendors are off to the side, on to the left-hand side, and whether they met all these requirements or not. Most of them used the, they did not commit themselves to 10 facilities. I think this is more market-driven than anything else. These facilities need to be of a certain size in order to be able to operate on an economic basis. There's all of them that had cautiously said that they would need the landfill for the excess of what they would not be able to process. And pretty much, here we are. What we wanted to do is we brought to the board several options, of which the first one is go out for an RFP, a request for proposal, using the same parameters that we had used before. The second one is to go out for an RFP using some different parameters, like changing, and this is just a suggestion, changing from 10 facilities to five facilities, or just let the market determine which ones, how many facilities are better suited to the needs of both the contractor and Brevard County. Recognize that all of them, at least the ones that presented, will require a landfill in which to take the residues that they can't process. The landfill, of course, wouldn't have, would be able to scale down on its activities, but would still be needed. One of the last ones is, and I would like to include also, some financial guidelines. And by that, I mean, we should publish the cost of the current operations. We should publish, in the RFP, by publish, I mean in the RFP. We should put our cost, our, what we charge to the citizens, and so when they go to respond, they have all the information that is required in order to them to make a big presentation. The third option would be to discontinue the process altogether. And the fourth option is any other direction in which the board wishes the staff to go to.
If I could add, Commissioners, option two actually takes into consideration the responses that were received in the RFI and modifies the original standards that, requirements that the board met to take into account the responses that were received. So that would, we'd have a better opportunity to receive a proposal that fell within those parameters.
Commissioner Loeb.
I spoke with Yuri about this, I believe it was last week. And I think there's certainly a good reason to include some of our cost information in anything that we end up rewriting, based on the difference in terms of what we had previously been paying for services and what we now are looking at paying. I think it's substantial enough that giving them some guidance probably would be to everyone's benefit. Whether we choose to make use of some of the other options or not, I'm flexible with. But it looks like, based on this particular regenda item, we really don't have many options in the way of 10 facilities, so it may be worth considering scaling that back to five as well.
I agree with that, Commissioner Loeb. And also, when I was spoken, when I was speaking to Yuri, we talked about the different elements. And you actually said that it would be possible to break this down into categories, because you brought up the category of yard waste and how it's such a potential thing in our landfill. So maybe if we break that out and we start looking at different categories as we're doing this also. And I am very interested in the yard waste category that you brought up and mentioned, that it would be doable, because the cost of that is starting to go up exponentially for us.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. One of the items that you saw previously under the consent was a budget change request from our department. We went out for, we used to take the mulch over to Willabretter over in Polk County at $8.75 a ton. They closed down the plant, they were sold out, and the new owners decided to close it. We went out for bids. The bids that we received, the least expensive bid was $19.97. As you can see, that's a huge increase in cost. When you also take into consideration that that's the mulch. We have to process it into mulch, which is another $9 a ton, and then our own cost of handling the material. On the private side only, you're looking at $19 plus another $9, which would bring it around $28. And those aren't exact figures, but it gives you an idea that we charge $23.66 a ton. And we are paying around $28 a ton. We have a problem with being upside down on this particular issue. Another consideration is that in 2012, the Sarno landfill brought in around 50,000 tons of yard waste, or let's just call it vegetative material. Last year, we brought in over 80,000 tons. And it's a problem, and it's not going to go away. And as the population increases, it's going to get worse. So they are areas in the department which are getting out of control, shall we call it. And if we can bring those under control with the help of a private contractor that would take care of this for us at a reasonable cost, that would be great for everybody involved.
So I would like to ask, as we're doing this, that staff would come back with a recommendation, maybe even how to just target this one as we're doing all of this. I think that would be a good one to start with, with a target.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, based, based on what Yuri has said to you guys and myself, I'm thinking option two would probably be the better way to go, because it would provide him and us with an awful lot of information, and we would have a better idea of going forward. Because my concern is, how do we anticipate the changes in our next contract? Because we've seen in this contract that we've had a lot of changes that have cost us money. Going forward, can we try and anticipate some of those and price it out accordingly?
I think one of the problems is that when we have Willabretter out there, Willabretter had been out there for decades. They were burning the mulch to convert it into electricity. They got bought out, they got sold, the new owners decided to close the plant. And I'm not too sure if this is a trend of the $19, or it's just the market taking advantage of a plant being shut down and later on, it will discontinue. But the trend on the, for example, the contractors that actually mulch it, the trend has been a steady increase every time we go out for bids.
Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I've heard what's been said up here, and I think Commissioner Smith said option two. And I think a lot of us have pointed in that direction. So I'd like to, you know, make a motion so we can at least have something on the table. I think there were a couple of points on option two that potentially we've offered change on and may need a little bit more change. The first one, two A, we talked about the number of facilities. My goal is to have as many vendors provide proposals as possible. And I think anytime we have a number, we're probably limiting the proposals. So I would like to remove the facility number requirement. Also, we have on that one, something about not adding to landfills. Some of these folks could actually remove quite a bit of waste from landfills, but if they were to add one single thing to a landfill, then that would technically take them out. So the, if we dynamically scored, if they took out 10 tons but added one ton, that wouldn't meet that, even though they would have decreased it by nine. So I'd like to take out the cannot add to portion. I think B is that. C, I think the numbers are good to put in there, the costs, but I would actually go a step further than that. And I would add a requirement that any proposal not increase the cost to citizens of Brevard County, adjusted for an annual CPI. You know, if you wanted to put our costs out there, that would be fine. But I would, I would like to, like I said, go a step further and say, you know, we're not willing to pay any, or have the taxpayers pay any more than what they're currently paying. And number, and sorry, and letter D, the market analysis. I don't think that there really is much of a need for a market analysis. We don't really require feasibility studies when you open, you know, other businesses to a large extent here in Brevard County. I think, again, this could be something that could limit the number of respondents. And my hope is that we get as many as possible. So I, you know, would like to make a motion for, I guess that would be two with changes, but very minor changes that have already been delineated by the board, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I have two speaker cards. I don't know if you want to hear them first, or you'd like to speak.
If you don't mind.
Okay, that's fine.
Just a question for Mr. Tobias. Would you consider, instead of saying cannot add, or striking that altogether, instead saying cannot cause or result in a net increase? Because I think that kind of accomplishes what you're trying to accomplish, but keeps some requirement in there.
That sounds better than I said yes.
Okay. And then the last question for Yuri. I personally don't care how many facilities there are, but do you have a concern scaling it back from the 10 that we requested down to zero? Or is there some substantial benefit for the county by keeping that number above a certain threshold?
To me, I would let the market determine it, because, mainly because, yes, there is benefits, the more facilities there are out there, but these facilities also have to be a certain size. They are supposed to be the experts in how big their facility has to be in order to run economically. So my choice would be to let the market determine. The responders determine how many facilities they want out there. We would also publish how many facilities we have in order to give them an idea, but let them respond to their economic model. Commissioner, as far as the feasibility study, the feasibility study was not done, or is not intended for whether they're capable of doing the job or not. It's intended to, if there's a byproduct of it, to determine that there's a market out there for it, and that we won't be left with a mountain of supposedly the product or not. They generally have to do it for their own purposes. What we're doing is asking them to share it if there's a byproduct that they're going to market, other than electricity and that kind of stuff.
Thank you. If you want to modify the motion, basically to say cannot cause a net increase or any similar language, I'm happy to second it.
Yeah, I'd like to keep, and I don't care if they, if they would include the feasibility, it's just potentially an added cost. And again, if we, if you open an ice cream shop, we don't require you to have a feasibility study to see if people in Brevard County consume ice cream. And I understand this is a little bit different, because these, this would be providing services to the county. But I think the board has said on a couple of occasions, we want to be, have some sort of surety bond, over and over and over again, as large as possible. So if the company was to go under, that we would have the required funds, not only to deal with the current situation, whether that be with tearing down a facility, or dealing with the excess amount of trash, all that stuff can be handled through a bond instead of a feasibility study. I just don't, again, my, my goal is to get as many respondents as possible. And I think the more qualifications we put on this, the less that could be. I have no idea how much a feasibility study costs. And I would ask that that would be optional at best, but certainly not a requirement like it is on item two.
Commissioner Smith.
Yuri, you said that the companies themselves would typically do a market analysis, because they want to know if their numbers are going to work?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Nobody goes into, invests into a business without doing their own study. Now, it might be proprietary that they do not want to share, and that has happened in the past. And that's not uncommon. The idea behind this was not about that, was about whether they would, you know, make widgets out of it, and whether they would have a market for those widgets. In other words, I don't want the company to go out of business in two or three years after the contract has been approved. On the other hand, they're investing millions of dollars into this product. And if they don't do it themselves, I'm not too sure that would be a good business deal. The question would be whether they want to share it or not. And another thing, Commissioner, maybe it shouldn't be part of the RFP. Maybe it should be part of the contractual negotiations for them to demonstrate it at that point in time, in order to lower the cost of them responding to the RFP. One other, one last clarification that I wanted to seek. We've talked about costs, and there's cost to the homeowners, and there's cost of the actual payment that we do when we go across the scale. We talked about the $29.50 a ton. That doesn't necessarily equate to what the people pay in the assessment. The assessment is generally that they pay a lot, not a lot less, but they pay less. The $29.50 supports other programs other than landfilling. So that's why I was interested in publishing as part of the RFP, that this is Brevard County's actual cost, or the last five years of what our cost has been. So they can note any trend or so forth. So we, I'm trying to get the best response possible from these companies in order to cut down on any misunderstanding. That's not going to be entirely possible, but I would like to cut it down as much as possible.
Well, and so if, and I would think that any company that is in this business, or pretty much any business, is going to do their own feasibility study to make sure that, excuse me, they're not getting in over their head. So it would be nice if they would make that available to us. But as long as it doesn't include, as you said, proprietary information, I don't see why they would have an objection to that. And I don't, it wouldn't cost us anymore for them to do a feasibility study, because they're going to do it anyway, correct?
Yeah, we are asking them to do it on their dime, not ours. There was one company that came in and asked, said that we're going to do a feasibility study at the, that the county should pay for it. And that's what brought this up.
All right. We don't, we don't want to pay for it.
My belief is that we shouldn't pay for it.
I agree. So Commissioner Tobias, what are your thoughts on the market analysis now?
My first question would be, Yuri, have you ever seen a market analysis come back that says, no, this is not feasible, and yet we, we move forward with a, the company moves forward with a project? I mean, do we know what the results are going to be prior to the actual?
No, sir, I've never seen that, but I've seen some that make the wrong assumption. And years later, it comes down to, to, you know.
Sir, do you have any idea how much a mark, I don't know, how much a competent market analysis, I mean, how much of burden we'd be placing on a business to provide us with, with this type of?
No, sir, I don't have an idea. But if it's a concern, then I believe at the very least, at the, if we select a vendor and they go on for negotiations, that that kind of information should be shared with the county. Not maybe as part of the RFP, but certainly during the negotiation process.
Commissioner Smith, I guess, I asked the county attorney this, there is, some of this stuff, profit margins, all this stuff, you know, is probably proprietary. And there is some stuff under state statute that would allow that to be kept confidential. I would be, I would be comfortable with that at the end, that that information be held confidential.
Yeah.
I don't want everyone to have, you know, the secret sauce, is what I'm trying to say if we mandate it.
Well, and that's proprietary, so that would be excluded anyway.
Whatever is, well, I mean, why don't I turn this over to the county attorney?
Well, the only problem is, sometimes the public views what's proprietary a little differently than the statute. And we won't know until they submit it, whether or not it meets the criteria of the statute. So there is the only problem that I see.
So, well, we'll just rely on the statute.
Right. That's all you can do.
Works for me.
Okay, I have a couple, couple comment cards, so I'd like to get to those before they get tired of waiting. Mr. Kirschenbaum? Name and address, please.
Yes, Jack Kirschenbaum, 207 Antigua Drive, Cocoa Beach, Florida. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
My name's Jack Kirschenbaum, and solid waste can really clear out a room. I'm with the law firm of Gray Robinson, and I represent Florida Recyclers. And we've spoken to Yuri on a number of occasions. And it appears to us that you, the commission, is truly at a crossroads. You are seeking new technologies, new answers to really big, really complicated questions. And this is going to, these answers are going to control solid waste issues for the next 10, 20, 30, or more years. Many of you were here when 3,000 acres was acquired from the Deseret Ranches some 20 or 30 years ago, and that appeared to be the answer then. So we're very familiar with things change, technology changes, and you are at that crossroads. What I'm suggesting is, as part of the options that you are going to give to Mr. Rodriguez, one of them is the acquisition of some land. This is an aerial photograph of your Sarno Road landfill. And what you may know is that portion up is owned by Florida Recyclers. Florida Recyclers operates a construction and demolition landfill, receiving concrete, mixed rubble, wood, drywall, cardboard, asphalt roofing, metals, bricks, and plastics. And most importantly, nearly 100% of the vegetated waste is recycled on-site and turned into organic mulch and soil products. The concrete, metal, drywall, cardboard, and plastics are also removed from the waste stream and recycled off-site. This is a potential opportunity for you to acquire this land and join it with these otherwise bigger plans for the future. This is a 45-acre site. It's fully permitted. It's a CND landfill. It has been in operation for a long time, and it is, it's a profitable operation, and there are many options that we could enter into if this is in interest to the county. But most important, my able assistant is helping here, the Sarno landfill, and this is part of your package as well, the Sarno landfill, when filled, would have a three-to-one slope, as would the Florida Recyclers.
Your three minutes is up, and I don't know how I give you more time without, unless the board desires.
That's quite all right. Mr. Moya will make some additional comments. And all I wanted to say is, we are just seeking an opportunity to be included within the option as a potential acquisition of the property.
Okay, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Are you familiar with the study that was done on this property?
Yes.
Regarding like, how many years? And these are questions I'll talk to Yuri about as well, and ask Yuri about, but how many years this extends the life of the existing landfill, if it, if it was pacing at the rate it is now?
Mr. Moya can address that issue, I think, better than the...
Because I may have some questions, I may give you a little extra time, but I'll let you speak first, Mr. Moya. I just don't want to chew your time asking you questions, if you're trying to give you three minutes.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Mr. Loeb?
I can hold off for a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Bruce Moya, with, also representing Florida Recyclers. I think we really wanted to present this to you. When I used to be your, one of your engineers here at the county, and I used to present items to the board, always was present every viable option. And so we really feel that this is a viable option. One, because it would extend the lifetime of your landfill. From some simple math we've done, based on that very complicated report, which I don't understand, because I'm not a waste engineer, I think you're coming to some capacity issues, maybe in the next five to seven years. That CND facility that's operating now was keeping that, a lot of that material from entering into that. If that, for some reason, as Yuri was saying, the business closed down, they don't have as much interest in running that facility like they used to. The person who used to operate it recently passed away, and so they're losing interest in operating that facility. That could shorten that lifespan of your, of the current landfill facility. So with the different, with the, filling the gap would give you an option. I think that there was somewhere like eight, eight to 12 years more capacity. And if you could get the recycle facility to the maximum height that it could do, you could get up to about 20 years. And that's the, some, the simple math that we've been doing to get you to, I'm sure that would need to be investigated, as well as, you know, what it would take to acquire the property, or even if it's a viable option for you all. So we just want to present that we believe it's a viable option, if you would have it, you know, if you'd want to look into it. So that's kind of all I really have to say on my part. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Loeb. Are there questions for these guys?
Yeah, with, with respect to this, now, I mean, it's more, I guess it's more toward the, the commission. This is in your district, is it not?
Correct.
Okay, I just, I wonder, and it's good to have you here too, what the specific concerns are, because I'm sure this is something you're much more familiar with than I am, and it's something where, you know, I'm happy to have options, but I don't want anyone to waste their time preparing options if it's something that, for whatever reason, we're not going to support in the end anyway. So I just wanted to get some of your thoughts with respect to this at the outset, if we could.
Well, in a perfect world, and rather than dump an enormous issue on this commission, in a perfect world, we've got, we've got three moving pieces. Now, this is Commissioner Znardi's talking, not, I don't speak for the board, I don't speak for staff, obviously. And, and this is near and dear to my heart, since before I was even a commissioner, is we have that landfill, you know, that Deseret Ranch property out there that we basically took from them, using eminent domain, over 30 years ago. We fought them in court, costing them hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably millions. The county spent millions. And when they got to a point to where they thought that they could lose it all, they agreed, you know, jointly with the county to allow for construction waste, for at least 10 years. And the county can come back and apply for, you know, to do all types of waste, household and otherwise. And this property is west on 192. So that would be the first thing that you would see when you drive into our county. And I know Kurt, Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Pritchett, and probably Commissioner Tobias, tired of me talking about this, because I've brought it up a few times, but you're new. But I feel very passionate about this. So when, when American Recyclers came to my office, I said, oh my gosh, I said, is this possibility that we could extend the life of our landfill? Oh, by the way, the county, we've done a... the life of our landfill? Oh, by the way, the county, we've done a study on this, and this has the potential to expand it even more." So, there's a fallback, because in my world, if I made all the decisions, and I'm sure, you know, in anybody's world, they would love to have that kind of power, I would give the land back to Deseret Ranch, since we took it from them, make them pay for it, because the county did reimburse, because they would have first right of refusal, because we would not be using it for the intended purposes, I do know that. And we would start looking at these other options, because I know, I absolutely know, that, you know, we did this, that we did the Deseret Ranch property, because the sky was falling on the landfill 30 years ago. So, now we've come up with ways, as technology changes, as we change, and I'm not, I'm not a solid waste person, but, but as we find ways to extend that life of the landfill, whether it be through removing stuff, adding stuff, you know, changing the, doing something different with the liner, and, I mean, again, I don't pretend to be an expert, it's not my area of expertise, but this, this would almost give us that security to say, assuming the land is good, because, again, like Bruce Moya, I look at this stuff, and I go, "Oh, my gosh, it's this monster report". I can only go off of what it, what it's telling me, but from, from the layman's point of view, and from my, you know, limited understanding as far as how waste breaks down, and how, it's a viable option.
Okay.
It's already zoned landfill, which takes years to get that kind of permitting. It expands the life of our existing landfill, and if we, you know, again, in this perfect utopian of mine, with unicorns and Deseret Ranch getting their land back, we could not only sell that land back to Deseret Ranch, we would have, you know, we use whatever their market value is on this property, they don't want to dime more, it's not like they're trying to, you know, shake us down. But I realize they're limited on what they can do with it, too, so there's probably some negotiation there. We would actually have quite a huge surplus of funding to address our infrastructure, to address some of those things that we haven't been able to address. And, again, I've butted heads with county staff on this, you know, Frank just looked at me and just smiled, because he knows that we think differently on how much we need this land. But, again, I'll tell you, 30 years ago, the sky was falling, and we needed to hold on to that land, and we needed to fight those people. And I was actually told, and it wasn't by Mr. Abate, but I was actually told, when I said I thought Deseret Ranch should get their land back, that, "Well, they're just going to develop out there, anyway". Not like, not trying to defend taking their land, they're just going to develop out their land, anyway. So, let's pretend that's true, I don't know, I mean, they're, they're nice people. We lease it back to them, so we're nice enough to do that, so they pay us for that. But, that's their, that was their land, and if they did want to develop out there, would you want to develop next to a landfill? Not me. You know, that's not what I would want to see when I drive. I cannot, again, it's my district, I don't want this landfill in anybody else's district. We have, this is my district, too, I mean, but if we have this space at the existing site, I think that that would give us that safety net of, okay, if we have to, we have this other option, because I know we can cure that. Even prepping it for what we need it for, we would still have an enormous millions of dollars to put towards infrastructure, to put towards some of those needs that we've wanted to do for a long time. So, again, I didn't mean to go on a...
No, no, I appreciate it.
...bit of a tangent, I just wanted you to understand the whole picture for me, like, where I sit.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett, or do you have more?
No.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yuri, can you get a report for us here over the next few weeks, maybe, on, on the pros and cons of this, and what the county would look at as far as cost? So, we kind of get a cost-benefit analysis, if we threw this in as an option? Another thing, is it possible to recycle construction waste?
To answer your last question is, the answer is yes, if you're willing to pay for it. In an environment like such as South Florida, highly urbanized area, you can recycle about 50% of the, of the construction and demolition waste.
Okay, so you know what, something I think we should maybe start thinking about, because we need to work on, the goal is to reduce our landfill needs, and not have to go anywhere else, and maybe even cut back some we have. So, if construction waste is filling them up, and I know we have other things, and yard waste is filling them up, so maybe if we target those two, and even if it is a cost, if it keeps us from having to move, and we can start utilizing this, I think the benefit to the county might, it might be leading into the future of what everybody should be doing. So, I would be interested in finding out the cost to recycle them. And, you know, on this thought, too, if you're a builder, you might, should have a little up-charge and start recycling some of these, these costs also. I don't know, we'd have to look at it, because I don't want to knock us out of the market for being able to build, either, but I think it's just responsible that we start taking care of our own waste cost of what we're, we're creating. So, that might be something that, if you wouldn't mind, that we can maybe look into, and I don't know how to phrase this perfectly, because I don't have it all figured out in my brain yet, but maybe we can get an analysis of recycling construction costs, we get rid of 50% coming in, and then also the yard waste. And maybe, if we look at this, too, we might have come up with an idea, potentially, to kind of stay with our own, our own boundaries and lane here of what we're trying to do, or, and we might not even need this, I don't know, but I would be interested to see in that, too, sir.
Yes, ma'am, except it would take more than a couple of weeks.
Well, I'll give you three weeks.
Three weeks.
Yuri, I have so much faith in you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm joking around.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I don't know that we need to put a timeframe on it, because this isn't something that has to be done in three weeks or three months, but Yuri can provide us with that, that information, I'm sure. And while you're doing that, Yuri, we would have to depend on you to give us the feasibility of buying this, what are the ramifications if we were to buy it, what is pros and cons of that, as well, and whether, if we sold the Deseret property, I would think, and that my understanding is, that it can't be used for infrastructure or anything other than, because it came from your funds, is that correct?
The monies were generated out of the solid waste fund and can only be used for solid waste purposes.
Right, so, it would be nice if we could use it for infrastructure, but we can't. But, yeah, it's certainly something worth looking at, and I would think that the more information we can get from you is, because this is your, this is your bailiwick.
We can certainly take a look at it, Commissioner.
Because it makes sense, if it, I mean, if it makes sense, we'd be silly not to take advantage of it.
I don't have a problem looking at that at all.
I think it's a great idea. Commissioner Tobias?
Just for cleanliness sake, I'd like to amend the motion, Madam Chair. And this, again, is pivoting off of to, option two, but technically will be option four. Remove facility number requirement, and B is the Commissioner Lober's suggestion, no net increase to landfills. C would be at a requirement that any proposal not increase cost of citizens of Brevard County adjusted for CPI, as well as publishing our costs as part of the RFP. And D, which would be Commissioner Smith's suggestion, would be a market analysis feasibility study at the end pursuant to a contract, as well as whatever was covered under...
119.
119 of confidentiality. So, I think those are the four requirements, Madam Chair, that were discussed.
I'll maintain my second.
Okay. All right, I mean, is there any staff direction? And I'm fine, I would keep this clean and separate from the other issues, but I know Commissioner Pritchett, you're okay with staff looking at it?
I would love staff to look at it.
Commissioner Smith?
This?
Yeah, as a separate issue?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we need a vote on that, Ms. Bentley?
Typically, if you're giving staff direction for an extensive report, we do ask for board direction.
Okay, so, let's vote on this one first.
How extensive a report are you looking for?
Okay, let's vote on, Commissioner Tobias, I just wanted to be clear that we weren't just shoving this away forever. Okay, so, with the existing motion, with the modifications, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion for staff to come back with an analysis on the potential of maybe purchasing additional property, and the capacity and all those items that you would bring back to us, included in thoughts of recycling construction waste and yard waste that would also add to the life period of our existing landfills. Why the good.
I have a motion. Commissioner Lober?
With, with respect to that, how formal a report are you looking to get back from him? I'm not opposed to, I'm just, I'm not really sure what we're expecting to get back from the department.
We usually don't get him too formal from Yuri, but he usually gives us a lot of information, but...
Just, Commissioner, to give you an idea of what the questions that you would be facing that the report would have to answer was, capacity, you got permits, permits, local permits, as well as state permits, how's the stormwater going to be affected, the new regulations, both of those landfills were built under the old regulations, new regulations, how are they going to impact? One is a construction and demolition landfill, the other ones, we call it construction and demolition, but it's really, technically, it's a Class III landfill, which is a slightly different types of material. So, how do we, how do we mesh them together? Mainly, it's stormwater issues and technical issues.
So, it's fairly involved?
I would have to get an engineer to ask, to answer the questions, yes, sir.
So, it could be fairly involved, at least?
Yes, sir, because stormwater is not an, a cut-and-dry issue. You got a lake in the back, and you got to calculate whether the lake is sufficient, you're going to, in order to join both facilities, you would have to eliminate another lake, again, capacity issues in the back. Ditches, are they sufficient? And, without being an engineer, I can tell you right now, no. You would have to redirect the ditches as far as the slope, and, and where are they heading towards. But, you don't have to get into the nitty-gritty of that, you can go into, you know, is it feasible to do it, yes or no?
Okay.
You know, and then bring that report back to the commissioners, and say, you know, this is what we found, do you wish us to pursue it as far as how much it would cost to join them, and that kind of stuff, in order for, for the commissions to have a clear idea of what we would be getting ourselves into.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
That's basically what I was asking for, get us enough information so we can have a good discussion up here. I would love to be able to manage our waste in the same amount of space we have right now.
In one area.
I would love it. So, if we can figure this out, that would, that would be the goal. If there's a way to get to that goal, I would love to see your brilliant minds come up with an idea, and then maybe...
Well, I'll tell you, the county staff, or the county in general, because they fought these Deseret Ranch people for so long, do not want to give up this land. Now, they will do the will of this board, however, but I'm telling you, we can make it work. I believe that we can. I know the construction waste was, was only, the reason why that was approved, wasn't because we had so much, I believe, at least it was told to me that it was approved because people were concerned about a heap of household trash. So, this makes it a little less painful, but in 10 years, you know, we might as well put, you know, Welcome to Brevard on the top of a pile of garbage, I mean, because...
If we can recycle it, though, man, we might have a really great idea.
But then, why, why even, why even mess with that land out there, you know?
Right, so if we can just recycle it here, find a way to recycle it here.
Oh, exactly, that's what, but if we have enough, you know, if that's what it requires, that's our backup, you know? And I know that study has a lot of information about prepping that land in there. It talks about what it, what it would take to get that land prepped and ready to include it as part of the landfill, so some of that work will be done, it won't be totally terrible on staff. Commissioner?
Just a quick question from Ms. Bentley, do you, do you know, obviously, we're talking a ways back, I don't know if you were even with the county 30 years ago, but did we end up picking up some or all of Deseret's legal fees with respect to that eminent domain?
Oh, yes.
So, this is basically, there's not, because I don't know the state of the law 30 years back, if we were required then to pick up their legal costs, as we are now?
Yes, we paid for their legal fees, we paid for their appraiser, we paid for the land, I believe it was $8 million.
Okay, and then, was that something that went to a 12-person jury, or was it resolved prior?
It was settled, and you had outside counsel at that time.
All right, perfect, I appreciate it, thank you.
So, they've incurred no more legal fees since then?
I believe there have been permitting issues where they've incurred legal fees, that I don't believe we covered those.
Yeah. And then they're currently leasing the land back from us.
So, I have not read that lease.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes?
Point of clarification, you mentioned a study, which study is, this is the one that...
Wasn't there a study done on this piece?
I just want to make sure that we're, I understand which one you're referring to.
Okay.
Jones, that one's a study.
Yes, I believe that one's a, I have that one in my office. That's the one I read, and I was like, thought I was doing really well, and understanding it all, and then it got a little too technical of the different types of soil, and different, you know, liners, and all this other stuff, so. All right, any more discussion? Okay, so, we have a motion, and somebody second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, guys.
You'll take your...
All right. All right, item J1?
Okay, item J1 is a request for legislative intent and permission to advertise code revisions to increase the number of RVs allowed, and the length of stay for RVs, as permitted at fish camps. And this item is a result of several meetings that staff has had with Honest John's Fish Camp, where currently, the, there's a limit of 72 hours for RVs at fish camps, and this poses a problem for them. So, what this item would do would more closely align the stay for RVs at fish camps as those with RVs, RV parks.
Any discussion, or is, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve for legislative intent, permission to advertise, second by Commissioner Pritchett, or Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Is this one we can all take?
I know. And Ms. Rosenka was going to stay for that item if she needed to, but she had to leave, but. Item J2?
Commissioner, this item is requesting approval for the county manager to be authorized to enter into program with FPNL Solo Together, which is a shared solar program. In the agenda report, you'll see the estimated costs over the first few years of our participation in that program. We would receive solar energy credits, the cost would be approximately $70,000 the first year, by the end of year four, and year five, I think there's like a approximately $500 expected differential, and then, for the remainder of our participation in the program for year six through year 30, upwards in savings to, at the end of the program, estimated to be, based on information we provided by FPNL, $795,000 a year. And so, we think it's, it's the way to go. We do have representatives from FPNL here. We would have to register by, I believe, the 25th, so we have a few days left that we could. I know there's a variety of other municipalities that are also looking and will be participating in the program, as well as their other major energy users.
I don't know where he stepped out.
I think he stepped out just a minute ago.
Okay, yeah. So, I just saw him, like, 30 seconds ago, minute ago.
Jennifer Schaefer, Florida Power and Light. I am a senior manager with the organization, and I'm leading up the development of this program, and happy to answer any questions the commission may have. Okay, Commissioner Lober?
I was going to say, with respect to this item, I've spoken with Mr. Abate at some length about it, and obviously, over the course of time that any of us are going to be sitting up here, we're going to be in the negative, but I think, notwithstanding that, if you look at the, the long-term prospects, even beginning on, on year eight, it really substantially benefits the county. The question is, do we have any costs that are so pressing between now, and do we expect to have any between now and the end of year seven, that would offset the, the pretty clear benefit of signing up for this? It just seems to me to be something that, well, it may not help us individually up here, I think it sure as heck helps the county, certainly over the long run. Looking at the numbers over a 30-year span, we'd be over $10 million bucks ahead, and as was mentioned by Mr. Abate, around $795,000 or $800,000 a year at the end, that this will benefit the county. I don't see this getting necessarily that much better. I think it's great in the sense that FPL is responsible for installing everything, that they have all the maintenance requirements, so if, if something goes wrong, it's on them, it's not on us. It makes it logistically a lot easier from our standpoint. The question is simply a numerical question, whether it's, it's in our interest, certainly in our long-term interest, I think the answer is resounding yes. I'm going to support this, and I would ask that, that my colleagues up here can... I'm going to support this, and I would ask that my colleagues up here consider doing the same.
Commissioner Smith?
I agree with everything Commissioner Loeb has just said. I myself have solar panels on the roof of my house. The drawback is that in 20 to 30 years, I'm going to have to spend the money to replace them. In this program, we don't have any future expense. FPL does. So we're going to keep, continue to reap the benefits. So as you said, it could be a real windfall. I don't see, and that doesn't mean there aren't any, but I don't see any hiccups here that would cost the taxpayers of this county any money going forward.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I mean, if we can't depend on FPL, who can we depend on?
They're very powerful people, as Mr. Loeb mentioned earlier.
That's right.
I think this is good. It's strategic, and sometimes you have to make an investment. And, you know, besides the cost for the county, I think we're just so far behind in where we should be on good energy anyway. So I think this is a great thing, and I think it's great for the environment. So I think it's a wonderful investment, so I also am on board.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the agenda item.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item three, J-3.
All right, we got there pretty quickly.
We did.
So the crux of this, the crux of this is, as I've alluded to previously, even when I was campaigning some months back, one of the things that I would like to have here based in the county is an ability for us to monitor where we're at with some actual solid numbers, some metrics that we can use moving forward to determine whether that $40 some odd million a year that we're getting in the half-cent sales tax is being put to good, efficient use, or alternatively, if we're going in the wrong direction. There are certainly, and I'm not going to tell you that there aren't any nutrient monitors in the lagoon now, there definitely are, but what I'm proposing is to have nutrient monitors, four of them, placed in the lagoon such that Natural Resources determines where they are as opposed to some other entity outside the county's purview. There are, as I mentioned, different nutrient monitors that are there now, but most, if not all, of those are being put to particular uses in localized areas, whereas these would be more broad-based, at least in my conception of how they'd be used, so that we can track where things are going in the future. You will notice in the actual agenda item that I am giving Natural Resources the ability to have some degree of subjectivity in terms of placement. I don't pretend to be an expert in terms of where precisely the best spots are. I'm sure that ORCA, which is the company that I'm proposing getting these from, would work with them. When I looked at this a few months back, and if this has changed to Ms. Barker's knowledge, I invited her to correct me, but when I looked at it a few months back, there was nothing else comparable in terms of what it would cost the county, either on the upfront side or the monitoring side. I will tell you that with respect to what I'm proposing, I believe if the numbers that were previously made known to me are still accurate, we were talking about $80,000 plus apiece, just to purchase the monitoring equipment for each location at the outset, but these are funded by DEP. They've already been paid for. DEP, obviously, by virtue of having funded it, vetted it to a degree, so it's good enough for the state. Some of them are already in use throughout the waterways. This would simply, basically, it would obligate us to pay a de minimis cost for the upfront installation. Depending on the location, it could be $1,500. If it's something where they need to sync a piling in there, it would be a little bit more. We're not talking a tremendous amount by any means. And then from there on, we'd be talking $30,000 a year per monitor, per location. So it's $120,000 a year in aggregate for the four of them over a course of a period of time that's going to be dependent, if you look at the agenda item, on whether FDEP or St. John's River Water Management District, if they reduce or eliminate funding for any existing monitoring stations, as I mentioned in there, within 20 miles point-to-point, then this will have to come back to the board again for approval. And the reason that that's in there is, based on my conversations with Ms. Barker, there was a concern that no-good deed would go unpunished, and that us adding these four would result in DEP or St. John's saying, thank you for offsetting what otherwise would have been a state expense. We're going to go ahead and scale back what we were spending. So this gives us some protection from that.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Loeb, you really did your homework on this.
Thanks.
I was really impressed, and I went through it, and I asked all the questions. And, you know, it's not an RFP matter because we already own them, and we're just going to pay monitoring to company. They're the only ones that can monitor them, so I got comfortable with that. And I asked Ms. Barker, we actually had some money in a rollover for monitoring that's been sitting in account, so the funds are there for it. So I went through the whole process. I thought, you know, the Lagoon Board would probably come back and recommend it anyways on this, because you really thought this out, and I think it's a pretty good plan.
Thank you.
So I'm going to support this, sir.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. And I didn't catch that. I apologize.
Sure.
I understand that we had the equipment. Is it true that the Ocean Research and Conservation Association is, in fact, the only entity that could monitor these?
These particular units, yes. There are other units that are available, obviously, at an upfront cost, and even if we were to put the upfront cost aside, the ongoing monitoring cost, when I looked at it, and it's been a few months, but they were so substantially higher, I can't fathom that they would have decreased since I looked at the cost and now. So with respect to monitors that have the upfront costs already paid for, they are the only ones that are able to monitor them because it's their equipment.
So in other words, my issue with this was, it was a single source.
Right.
That's in here.
Right.
But in other words, if we were to put this out for RFP, we only could get one back, we only could get one if we were to save, if we were to keep the equipment that we currently have in place. Is that fair?
I'm all for putting things out to bid or for RFPs. I will tell you that, having done the due diligence myself with respect to this, you could not use these particular monitoring stations and put it out to bid, because I don't know that they would permit someone else to service their equipment. I know that, among other things, you will have, depending on the sampling frequency, you will have folks going out a dead minimum of once a month physically to the actual sites to make sure that the reagents that are used to determine the different metrics that are measured, whether it be nitrate or whether it be phosphates, to make sure that they're still filled. They check the sensors to make sure that they are calibrated appropriately, and they'll actually bring basically an equivalent unit with them to run through the same measurements to make sure that things mesh and are either identical or in close enough proximity that everything's determined to be working properly. If there are any issues with oxidation with any of the metal contacts, they'll address that. This really is kind of a one-source shop in the sense that unless we're looking at paying substantially more for different technology, there's no way to put this out in such a way that we could get more than one response back.
That or yes would have worked.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry for the lawyer answer.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I love the idea of getting more information, because we do definitely need to know how successful what we're doing is. And I don't think you can ever get too much information about anything. My only concern is $30,000 a year just to go out and monitor, I don't know, I haven't looked into it. I guess you have. That just seemed to be pricey.
I'll tell you a couple of things. It's not just someone going out, first off, they're based south of us, they have to have an individual physically here. There are other costs that are incorporated within that 30. For instance, the units themselves, depending on the sampling rate, they actually have the ability, and this is how they report back, to report back without human intervention through basically, I don't know if it's a SIM card, or it's basically cellphone technology using the existing towers, such that it will respond and it will report back. If you want 15-minute intervals, it'll do 15-minute intervals, really whatever you want. But the problem is, if you've ever had a fish tank and you've checked for ammonia, or pH, or salinity, or specific gravity, or dissolved oxygen, any of that stuff, there's a process that actually has to be undertaken in order to get those measurements. And the reagents, when you're mixing the chemicals to get you the values, and some are based on an optical sensor, where you have to have the reagents added in order to get those values, or in order to have a sample that's able to be measured by the equipment that's onboard.
So it's hard, is what you're saying.
It has to have human intervention. And I'll tell you as well, everything is relative, and the next closest alternative is much more expensive than this. So in comparison to the market, it's below market. Whether you or I happen to think it's expensive is kind of irrelevant, because there are no less expensive options that are available. I'd love it if there were, and if there were, I would have been proposing something different. But, you know, other than, you know, than going down the alley and seeing if someone wants to make something as a one-off, from anyone that's even conceivably approaching being legitimate, this is the cheapest option that we have.
Okay, well, and I'm a little confused, because, and I'm not a techie.
Sure.
So pardon my stupidity, but if we have these monitoring deals in four different places, my thinking is that they should be pumping out information constantly that's available with a cellphone or Bluetooth.
They are.
And if they are, then why do we need to spend somebody to do physical reagents?
Because in order to get the data that it's uploading automatically and it's doing the testing automatically, it still requires human intervention to refill the reagents, to make sure they don't have battery issues, to make sure that things don't go wrong. They will occasionally have something go wrong with them, where you'll have, with salt water, in this case, brackish water, you'll have contacts oxidized where certain things will fail. This is something of a cottage industry in the sense that they're not 10,000 different distributors or sources from which you can get this equipment. So I can tell you that, not just with ORCA, but even with St. John's River Water Management District, you still have people going to the sensors to refill the reagents, which have to be refilled. It is no, there's no way shy of, I guess Jeff Bezos coming up with a drone that can go in there and manipulate it in, you know, the remote pilot. There's no logistically realistic way to refill the reagents, to make sure the battery is in working order, to check the contacts, and to make sure that the equipment is in the condition that it needs to be in order to do the measurements autonomously.
And how long a contract is this?
It depends on whether or not St. John's River Water Management District and/or DEP end up defunding or taking away any of their existing nutrient monitoring systems. If they don't, it's contemplated as being able to be renewed annually for up to three additional consecutive years through county staff. If they do remove any of those, what I'm proposing is just a one-year term, and then it would be brought back to the board to determine whether or not we ought to continue on that course.
Works for me.
Perfect.
Great job explaining it.
Thank you. I'm trying. So moved.
I have a motion. You made the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have four resolutions, so I'll run over these very, very briefly. The first one is a resolution for Representative Thad Altman, HB 89. Last year, I introduced a measure which would extend the requirements to utilize the free eVerify program to all county contractors that passed 5-0. This resolution simply supports a bill which was filed by Representative Thad Altman, also sponsored by Senator Bean in the Senate. HB 89 requires all employees throughout Florida to use eVerify. It puts Florida in line with the southeastern region. States that already do this are Alabama, Georgia, Mississippi, and South Carolina. And that's what the resolution does, Madam Chair.
Great. Commissioner Pritchett?
I was just ready to second it when you mixed motions.
Motion to pass this and get this sent up to Representative Altman's.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. On September 18th, I brought forward a measure to amend county policy to require all county contractors to utilize the free eVerify system. Again, the board unanimously adopted this. I informed the board that it was considering bringing forward a more expansive measure which would apply to all employees in Brevard County, the same way that Representative Altman is doing at the state. The county attorney's office did some research, and they identified several ambiguities in state statute. Florida statute allows for the board to request the attorney general's office issue an opinion on questions like this. Requesting this opinion does not obligate the county to act on or in any way. All this would do is give us more information. This is just more clarification. It's not looking for another opinion from one that the county attorney has already provided us with. So the motion would be direct the county attorney's office to request an opinion from the Florida attorney general's office on a question substantially similar to the following. Does Brevard County have the authority under Florida law to condition the insurance or renewal of a business tax receipt on participation in the federal eVerify program? That's the motion, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I'm good with this also, Commissioner Tobias. I really respect Ms. Bentley, but I have learned in this long life I've lived that many attorneys have many different opinions, so I'm fine with moving it up to the next level and getting another opinion too, sir, to see if we can get the eVerify where we'd like it to be.
Yeah, and just, I appreciate, just to clarify, it's not that we're, I'm going against, or the county would be acting against our county attorney's opinion. This is just for further clarification of questions that she outlined.
Totally understand. Second opinion's always good, too.
Yeah. Commissioner Loeb?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure that I understand the specific question being posed to the AGO office. Is that something that you're contemplating Ms. Bentley will draft, or is that something that you're contemplating the county manager's office will draft?
I would, well, I was pretty specific on what I was looking for here. I'd certainly like the county attorney to double-check, but it basically comes down as the county have the authority under Florida law to condition the insurance, sorry, insurance or renewal of a business tax receipt or participation in the federal eVerify program. So it's pretty specific, as you probably know, that the AGO wants it as specific and single-minded as possible. So if the county attorney has the ability to make that question more singular, by all means, I would want her to do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Awesome. So I have a motion on the floor?
Ms. Pritchett, second.
Oh, did you second? Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another bill being filed by our delegation. HB 141 has been introduced by Representative Randy Fine, chairman of the Brevard County Legislative Delegation, and Senate companion bill SB 216 has been introduced by Senator Gruders. HB 11141 proposes legislation gives Brevard County its partners the opportunity to request more than $50 million in local match for projects benefiting the Indian River Lagoon. Members of this board and the public have stressed repeatedly that state funding is critical to restoring the Indian River Lagoon to its natural beauty. Matching funds will be available for projects which will directly prevent sewage discharge in the lagoon. Match will only be available for septic sewer conversion projects, which has been a focus of Brevard County, and includes in the Save Our Indian River Lagoon project plan approved by the Citizens Oversight Committee. All this resolution do is let the delegation be known that it is the official position of the Brevard Board that the bill is in the best interest of its citizens.
I'll second it.
Motion approved.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobias, I love the way you wrote this, and if it was just on the way you wrote it, no heartburn at all. My only struggle is, and I am so thankful that our representative, Mr. Fine, put this through. I mean, it's really good. He's really fighting for it. My only heartburn is with the fines in his house bill. So if we could do this and maybe just kind of, like maybe those fines would be negotiable or something, that's an awful lot to put on the community, and maybe other communities need to, but just since we pay so much, so is there a way I could get you, that we could do this, but there's a way we could pull out the severity of the fines in it if we move forward? I really want to support him. That's my only struggle.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm with you, but it's my understanding to amend bills. We would have to be members of the Florida Legislature, and I've done it, and trust me, you're sitting in a better position than what that would be. So, you know, I would respect, you know, if you were to vote this down, I think it's very clear that you support the spirit of it. It would be just the penalties that would be involved, and I don't think, knowing Representative Fine, he would take that as much of an insult, especially since you're on the record for supporting the spirit of the matching funds.
Good, that would be it, and I would never want to publicly do anything to harm him either, so that's my only hard place with this, sir. So thank you for allowing me to say that, too.
Commissioner Smith? Oh, wait, Commissioner Loeb, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, with respect to that, I think unfortunately with this, where it is and where we are, we've got to take the bad with the good. It's kind of like a marriage. You know, I'm sure there are things my wife would love to change about me, but it's kind of a package deal, so, you know, with this, I'm going to support it. I do, you know, I do understand where the concerns are arising from with respect to the penalty clause. I will tell you that I've spoken with Mr. Fine about this specifically, and I think, and I didn't ask him point-blank because it seemed pretty apparent from our conversation that his pushing this forward is contingent on that particular item being in there. I think it's, again, it's a package deal, and you either take it or you leave it. What happens when it's up in Tallahassee? Who knows how it gets amended, what gets changed? But my thought is, with respect to the fine portion of it, I don't see any municipality paying the fine. I think it would almost be worthy of removing someone from office if they'd rather pay a buck per gallon as opposed to two bucks per gallon to fix the underlying problem. It's going to put some folks in a tough spot, I don't doubt that. Certainly, there are going to be some municipalities, maybe some counties, that are impacted by that in a way that they're not happy with, but I think that this commission, certainly as it's currently comprised, has shown a tremendous willingness and a tremendous inclination to look toward infrastructure and to prioritize infrastructure more so than it's been in the past. So in that sense, and for that reason, I'm happy to support it as it is, but I certainly respect your opinion, and I understand the basis of your concern.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I'm totally supportive of the idea of getting some matching funds. I think they're long overdue, and I'm happy that Representative Fine realizes that and is pushing this forward. I do also have a real concern about the fine aspect, not the Randy fine, but the monetary fine, because essentially, say, for example, and I guess they'll work this out in Tallahassee, or maybe not, but say, for example, we have a 20 million gallon discharge, but 3 million of it is raw sewage and 17 million is just water. Are they going to differentiate that? You know what I'm saying? Because you're talking about a big difference between $3 million fine and a 20 million fine. That's one. Number two, who's going to pay the fine? The fine's going to be paid by the utilities, which is the taxpayers. And I would think that you have a real problem going to the people that pay the rates to keep that sewer running and make them be responsible for something that's unforeseen, because, you know, these sewers aren't failing because somebody's malicious. They're failing because either they're old or some environmental damage occurs, like undermining of the sand underneath a pipe that causes undue pressure and it breaks. You have to, you have to understand that when we had Irma go through here, we had over, I believe it was 329, I could be wrong, but I know it was a large number of sewer failures in the state of Florida. And when Michael went through Texas, the entire city of Houston, the entire city, every single sewer system failed. And that's just one city. All the counties around there had failures also. So that penalty, while it sounds good, and we're going to punish those rascally people that have a bad sewer, but the citizens are the ones that are going to be footing the bill, because the rate payers are going to have to pay.
May I jump on that?
Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, thank you. It's just, I asked, like with that last one we had, it would have been like a $12 million fine, and here's the, I mean, okay, if it wasn't just Brevard County, if it was, if Brevard County was excluded, I'd probably be okay with it. Let me tell you why. Because we've already done a self-imposed tax to try to make some improvement, so I can get it statewide. This might be necessary, I don't know. But, you know what, they're really trying here in this county. Everybody's working so hard trying to fix these things. It's not that we don't need to do some changes. I think we need to work on some rate increases, to start getting a little more aggressive with these problems we have. But I just can't tax this community with what they're already doing that much. I just can't do it to them. But I really, I'm telling you, really, because he came in here before, and he was frustrated with everything going on, and for him to really try to get together a bill to try to address this, I'm really thankful for it. And I'm like Commissioner Tobias said, I can't change it moving forward, but I guess there'll be some changes up there. But that's my only heartburn with this. So I'm not going to support it because of that, but not that I don't support our representative out there really fighting for us.
Could we change the wording? Our wording, our support wording? Say that we 100% are behind the intent of this bill, but we take exception to the fine aspect, the dollar fine aspect.
Commissioner Tobias?
Yeah, a couple, a couple things here, and I think yes. I think your answer is yes. I just wanted to put a couple things down. 131 align, you mentioned whether or not it's water or sewage. 131, 132 contemplates that, raw or partially treated sewage. So if it was water discharge, it wouldn't. And then I don't want it to be thought of like a $2 fine. The $2 per gallon would not go to the state. The $2 would have to go into infrastructure. So it's not going out.
And they would be forgiven if they used that, those funds to...
I'll tell you what, it, I don't want to, I don't want to, it doesn't look good, in all honesty, and I'm not going to lie, if three members are in favor of this, I think we potentially could pass it, and, but when Representative Fine gets that up there, it probably doesn't look the greatest. So I'll tell you...
Sure, give him more leeway.
I'll tell you what, so, let me ask to table this. I will bring it back in two weeks to change it, to support the matching of it, and to, how about I just accidentally forget to put in the fine aspect of it?
Right, and then he can, he can go up there and say, my own county unanimously supported this.
I will amend it, so I would pull back my motion and ask to table this, Madam Chair.
And when you come back, or, you know, do we know where it is sitting right now, the bill? Is it completely through?
Oh, no, 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 this hasn't, this, no, this hasn't started. I think it's probably just been put in the committees, and it hasn't even had its first hearing yet.
Oh, I thought it went...
My understanding is it had not had its first committee hearing.
Okay, no, I didn't know, that's why I asked. Okay, so we have a motion to table. Somebody second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. I'm just going to read this one since it's short. This is a resolution supporting the goals of Governor Ron DeSantis as they relate to policy which affects the citizens of Brevard County. Whereas on January 8, 2019, the 46th Governor of the State of Florida, Ron DeSantis, was inaugurated, and whereas Governor DeSantis is conservative, believes an unobtrusive and efficient government, and whereas Governor DeSantis has stated that he will not participate in other states' ventures to match increasing expenditures with higher taxes, but will instead focus on expanding the economic base with a reasonable regulatory climate and low tax burdens, whereas Florida's newly sworn-in governor recognizes the link between the environment and the economic drivers of our state, including tourism, and whereas nowhere is it more true than the, quote, "The quality of our water and environmental surroundings are foundational to our prosperity than in Brevard County," and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Brevard County to support the governor in his effort for a limited but efficient government thereby allowing Brevard County to become more beautiful and prosperous than ever. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County does let it be known to support Governor DeSantis' effort to keep citizens' tax burden low, reduce the regulatory burden of doing business, restore water bodies such as the Indian River Lagoon, and expand the economic base of the great state of Florida. Quote, "So sail on, o ship of state, for the future of Florida is strong and great." Done, ordered, and adopted in this, regular, 22nd day of January 2019. Request the passage of the resolution, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias.
I would like, I would like to second it, just for that last phrase thrown in.
That was in his inauguration, not my, yeah, clear.
I was going to ask if Mr. Tobias had actually coined that himself, if he was going to try to claim credit.
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I like all the things that our new governor is doing. He's taken the bull by the horns in many areas. I don't support this, and I'll tell you why. Because what it's doing is, it's sending the message that we're not going to be players for businesses coming to this state anymore, because if we restrict, because Alabama gave Blue Origin $35 million, we can't compete with that, but at least it's a possibility we can compete. Excuse me. What this is saying is that we're not, we're not going to compete with other states with incentives. That's exactly what it says.
That was not my intent. Can you point out where, I'm sorry, where?
Well, it says, well, I don't have it in front of me.
I think you're looking at the third item.
The third whereas.
So whereas Governor DeSantis stated that he will not participate in other states' venture to match increasing expenditures with higher taxes. I don't think that has anything to do with...
Zero to do with it.
Would you feel more comfortable if, well, not, Governor DeSantis stated that he will focus on expanding the economic base with reasonable regulatory climate and low tax burden?
That's good.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, because I don't, that wasn't the intent here, and if that makes you feel more comfortable, I'd like to get this one unanimous.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah, I don't think that's what he meant in that.
I don't think so.
I didn't read it that way.
But if you read it that way, absolutely, let's take it out.
Yeah, good.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor and a second. I think Commissioner Pritchett seconded it, right?
I did.
You beat me to it.
I did.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, I have no public comment cards. Board reports, Mr. Vate?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Loeb?
God, I really want to be a team player and just go along with no report.
Come on, come on, Commissioner Loeb.
What the heck, no report, I'll put it off.
No, I'm stazing, I'm just teasing you. I was just trying to give you a hard time, go ahead.
Do you want to go before me?
Yeah.
Okay, may I defer to Commissioner Tobias first?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll be quick, because I'm not sure I'm going to get a second on this one, but on January 15th, I went to the Brevard delegation meeting that took place during this meeting. A local bill was discussed that would give the board limited oversight over pre-charter CRAs. The mayor of Titusville got up there, and as an elected official, I certainly expect for my feet to be held to the fire. And even the law does that in so much it, slander and libel is different for elected officials than other folks, so I fully respect that. My issue here is when individuals go after staff members of the county, I find that absolutely abhorrent. And the line was crossed as my, in my opinion. So I would like to send a letter that I believe is complimentary to the mayor of Titusville. I'll provide you with a copy here, but it is my intent to ask the Attorney General for her opinion coming up on some matters. But it reads, "Dear Mayor Johnson, thank you for voicing your insightful opinion at the Brevard County delegation meeting on January 15, 2019. During this meeting, you provided extremely profound input on the value you place of the opinion of the Brevard County Attorney's Office, in particular, your legal opinion on lawful expenditures of CRAs in contrast to an individual educated at the University of Florida whose practiced law on behalf of the citizens of Brevard County for decades was quite compelling. Clearly, being the mayor of the city with the nation's largest custom banjo distributor, as detailed on the city's official's mayor list, has instilled an unmatched command of the complexities of Chapter 163 of Florida statutes. As you do not accept the opinion of the Brevard County Attorney's Office, as even moderately persuasive, we ask that you consider requesting the city, the Titusville City Council, submit the question at hand to the Florida Attorney General's Office pursuant to Florida Statute Section 1601, Section 3. The Brevard County Commissioners will be considering mirroring this request. Of course, it may be that you value your own legal expertise more than General Moody's office, as your opinion does constitute a, quote, 'finding' carried the force of law.' The Brevard County Commissioners nevertheless would value the opinion of the Florida Attorney General's Office, should such an opinion be rendered, would consider it while making any decisions on the matter moving forward. Still, will be sure to give your legal opinion the appropriate weight in any such decision as well. We look forward to your response before the next meeting of the Titusville City Council on February 12, 2019. Respectfully, Christine Isnardi, Brevard County Board, Brevard County Board, Brevard County Board of Commissioners, and CC to all the other members. I will be bringing up for discussion at our next commission meeting, asking the Attorney General for her opinion on, it's kind of unique, on the opinion that, the exact same opinion that was rendered by our previous county attorney. So, but I didn't want to put my 14-point or 24-point bold stuff in the bottom, I'd rather have this come from...
From me, in the board.
Well, you are there, I would put my signature on it.
And I honestly, I watched most of that meeting, but we were, I was literally in a hotel room with crummy service in South Carolina. I will have no problem with this if I, what I see on there is not appropriate to put my name on this. I just want to be sure that I view it and review it, so, I mean, I hate to ask you to table something, but if you...
I'm sorry, can you, can you say that again? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
I didn't catch that entire meeting. Like, I caught 90% of it, and I want to believe that what you have in here is honest, and I'm sure it is, but I'd like to review it, if possible, before I agree myself, at least as far as, I mean, I don't know if you'd consider tabling it or not, it's up to you, but, and I know I'm not the only voice up here, I'm just giving you my, my two cents.
Yeah, unfortunately, I plan to be bringing this up at the next, at the next county commission meeting, to ask the Attorney General's opinion on this, regardless of whether or not this passes or not.
Yeah, I really don't care about that part. I'll support you on that, because I think any opinion from the Attorney General is only a good thing, but, but as far as, you know, this letter is very craftily written, and before we...
It's very complimentary. I did not take any insults, I did not mean to...
It's a little sarcastic, come on. But that's okay, that's all right, I can appreciate good sarcasm, but I just want to, I want to at least put my eyes on that.
No, that's absolutely fair. I wanted to give the mayor and council time on this, so should I not get the full support? I'll tell you what, I wanted full support on this, and seeing as, you know, I'm hearing a no there, I will respectfully pull this back, send this with the disclaimer that former chairwoman Pritchett had outlined on it, and so I will pull the...
Or you can wait, it's up to you.
Yeah, but again, if I wait, then I won't have given the mayor time, even though I'm sure he'll get a copy of this.
But it wouldn't be fair of me if I didn't, if I didn't view it, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely, so I'm going to pull that request back.
Because I'll tell you, I'd be happy to sign my letter if he was insulting to our county attorney. Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobias, don't be messing with our custom banjo distributor.
It was on, it was on, I learned something about Titusville.
They're really cool.
I bet you they are, you put it on his webpage.
I had no idea, and it was, it's just amazing what they do up there, but, you know what, I watched the whole thing through, by the way, and actually, you got up there and spoke elegantly the way you do, but, you know what, on the first part of his, it was cut off, so I didn't even get to hear a part of it, because you came back from a break, so I don't, I'm a little, you know, I don't know all of that. I heard a little bit of the conversation back and forth, and everybody seemed a little bit light with what I was watching. Did he speak as himself, though, sir, or as a mayor? Because I know you did that, you separated yourself out and said it was personal.
He identified himself as the mayor, did not provide, to the best of my knowledge, did not provide his individual address, whereas wearing a mayor's shirt with the insignia on it, I don't, you know, I don't recall specifically, I was not, gave my official, I gave my home address, and said right off the beginning that I was not speaking on behalf...
You did.
I was very, very clear about that.
Yes, I missed the whole first half of that, so...
So I'll tell you what, why don't I just pull this all together? It's been read on the record, I'll send a copy over there, they can decide whether or not, you know, they want to, you know, join us if we go through with that, and I have no idea. I just wanted to give the folks a heads-up that I will be asking for General Moody's opinion on some lawful expenditures of these organizations next.
Okay, because, yeah, I'm fine with that, too, I don't mind it going up there, because I wore you out last time we went over this conversation a few years ago, remember? I did, I know I did, because I was persistent on the Attorney General opinions, and I'm just, I remember two Attorney, two, that word, Attorney General opinions came back, and, you know what, I think we might need to do something at the House, the Florida level, of maybe defining this a little bit better, and I know this goes back and forth all the time, but I don't think it's very clear myself, and maybe we should, you know, maybe make some changes in that. I think it's time to.
Showing up to the delegation meeting, I do not believe that the Brevard delegation has any motivation or any desire to change CRAs.
Some expenditures.
One, in fact, Representative, former Senator Altman said he would like to provide the CRAs that were created after the charter, the powers that were given to the ones that the CRAs that were created after the charter, the powers that were given to the ones that were created prior to the charter, because his idea was never to have a charter in the first place. So...
Of course, it was his letter, though.
I think that, I think that you have some, there's some strong CRA supporters in our delegation up there. Very strong CRA supporters.
You know, because I find, even, we've been fighting this for a while, but I've been watching most of the CRAs change their policy, even individually how they spend money. I think they're starting to recognize that there's some appropriate, non-appropriate places.
That we're watching.
Yeah. So, well, and, you know, you just, you do it long enough. They got new boards, and they try to learn to what they're doing and figure it out. So maybe that would be a way we could start, you know, working on that, is maybe what's appropriate and not appropriate. Maybe we'd start ticking it off a little bit at a time and see if we can't get some kind of stronger guidelines from the state. Just a thought.
I would join you in that, and I would love to stand up there with you at the next delegation meeting, because it's very lonely when you're up...
You were full up there.
No, 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 when you're up there and, you know, the chairman doesn't get a second. So that was, that was, there are some very strong CRA supporters on the Brevard delegation, to say the least.
I've learned everything we're doing here, it's hard to turn this big shit fast. So we've got just a little timer. Everybody gets a little shocked. But, but you do know I do like CRAs, but I like them done correctly. So...
So I hope you join me in the, we'll get, we'll get what is correct, hopefully, if you join me on the request for the opinion to the Attorney General's next. Thank you.
Commissioner Loeb?
Question for you. I understand, based on what you've just mentioned, that the timing of tabling this for another meeting is not going to work. Were you able to get a response before the next meeting? What would the deadline be in order to have something meaningful to turn out, to add names?
I would certainly share with whatever response I get with the, you know, with the, I'll put the Indusia at the bottom of, that this is not the opinion. And whatever I have, I will blast out to the entire, but I'm sure, you know, the mayor will as well. And I have a feeling it's not going to be as complimentary as what you see there. But I will be glad to share that. But it's not going to change the next agenda coming up here where I ask for that opinion from the Attorney General's office.
Because I'll tell you, just with respect to that, just as I didn't like earlier in the meeting to see my colleague up here attacked, I don't like seeing staff attacked. It really doesn't sit well with me. If they did something inappropriate and there's a genuine complaint, that's not what I'm talking about. That said, I'm not going to mislead anyone into believing that I watched this whole thing verbatim, word for word. I did not at this point. I had bits and pieces. Okay, well, you have, and obviously Mr. Tobias has as well. God bless. That said, I don't know, and I'm going to bounce this by Ms. Bentley now. I don't know, and my inclination would be to say no, but it's approaching that gray area where I do want to double check. Were I to send Mr. Tobias something saying, please add my name, do not respond to this, I don't know that that would be a breach of sunshine. It's not something I'm comfortable doing without making sure it's okay, though.
You might want to send your own letter separately.
Okay.
On, you know, as your own opinion. That's the cleanest way. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would ask that you try to be as complimentary as I was in that letter.
But facetiousness is okay?
In other words, sarcastic?
I read this, and I thought, God, that's like something I'd write. I like it. I like it.
Sure. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with this also. But just, I don't know if something was cut off. But what I watched, I just saw just a debate. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary that everybody wasn't just kind of expressing themselves. So, yeah. But Commissioner Tobias, you want to send up an opinion from the Attorney General? You know, I'm on board with that now. So...
But that'll be coming next meeting. I need to hone it down to a little bit more specificity. But I'll have that for the next meeting. I'd love to have your support on that one.
You will.
Okay. Is that all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Commissioner Smith?
No report.
And me, I have no report, and I just want to...
I'm sorry, I was going to say, one, I know I deferred to Mr. Tobias. I can go after you if you'd like.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Oh, wow.
You want to go, go for it. I'm not in a rush.
No, I was just going to, you know, tell everybody to have a great afternoon. Go ahead.
Okay. No, just a couple of real quick things. The puppy mill item, I believe I may have mentioned at the last meeting that I was going to bring that back, or I intended to bring it back in February. It's definitely getting brought back, but looking at how things are lining up, it's more likely that's going to come back in March. I didn't want anyone to think that that fell off the table. It's still a very high priority for me. But realistically, it's not going to be in February. And then the last item I wanted to bring up is, I will, in all likelihood, I'm still performing a little bit of due diligence with respect to this, or more accurately, a lot of due diligence, potentially be proposing adding tertiary treatment to the Sykes Creek plant. I just wanted to plant that bug early on, just so it's something that hopefully won't be a shock or a surprise to anyone when that comes up down the road. That may be several months out, though. Thank you.
Great. Anything, Mr. Vate?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Meeting adjourned.